Ladies and gentlemen, I'll like call this meeting in order. I've got six o'clock. I thought it was seven and Mr. McCray said we're running town time now. But before I do, is there anybody here that has lost a watch in the last month or so? If you can identify a lost watch, it's yours. We found it on the floor down here and we don't know who lost it. It's a ladies' watch, I will tell you that much. Okay, let's have a pledge of allegiance. Mr. McCray, if you will lead this pledge.
Please join me in saying the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is man's, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item of business is to approve June the 4th, 2018 Town Council minutes. Has anybody got any changes they want to make to the agenda? All right.
We've got two things going there. We need you to vote to approve minutes.
That's what I'm on.
Then you said agenda, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, maybe I did say agenda, I meant the minutes from June the 4th.
I meant we issued the minutes.
You're right, I jumped around a little on you. Second?
Joe, second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, no questions. All right, the adoption of the July the 2nd, 2018 Town Board Agenda. Anybody got any changes or want to move anything around?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do need to add a closed session, which I hope will be a brief one, reason being GS 133-1184 to discuss matters relating to economic development incentives.
Okay. All right, do we need a motion on that?
Just to add to the...
Information, okay. All right, I'll entertain the motion to accept the agenda as presented.
With the...
Put the closed session, yes.
Okay.
All right, all in favor? All right, the public session, I have one person signed up, Kristy Rankin.
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Rankin.
Hi, Mayor.
Come on down.
Thank you. I'm here again to talk about my dogs and my neighbors. So, these are additional points to present for consideration at the meeting. I am here to continue to address the dog ordinance as it concerns my own dogs and my neighbors. Some of my neighbors do not want any barking from dogs at all. Recently, one of my neighbors came into the street in front of my house yelling at me that he hates my dogs and then he called the police about it. This man is taking care of his mother, who is very old with dementia. Another lady who lives on his property had a heart attack about six months ago. Now another neighbor, who I would ask from time to time if any of my dogs were any problems and he would say no, I would ask his wife, she would say no, I would say, "Let me know if there are any problems." I never would hear from him. Well, he just went through hip surgery, found out that he has leukemia, and now is saying he has a problem with my dogs. Due to their health conditions, it appears that these neighbors would like to live in a world without any barking dogs or noise of any kind. But realistically, we live in a world full of noise all around us every day. I didn't foresee when I bought my home 16 years ago that having two dogs would cause so much distress in my neighbors. Ever since the complaint about my dog started, I have gone out of my way to minimize the barking of my dogs. I am usually at work during the day for at least three to five hours. I have separated my dogs, leaving one in the house and the other one outside in the dog kennel. I am just like many others who love their animals but still must go to work and pay the bills. When I am at home, I monitor my dogs. I monitor their playing and their barking and I abide by the 30-minute rule in the town ordinance. Also, before going to work, I put my two dogs outside to go potty and they play for about 10 or 15 minutes. Recently, one of my neighbors has started calling the police because sometimes they will bark at each other while they're playing. Or if a car drives by, and I live in a circle, so it just takes a second to drive, you know, past my house. But if a car drives by, they will bark at it. Or if the stray gray cat in the neighborhood happens to wander on our property, they will bark at it. Or if a neighbor's dog, which we pet, gets loose and comes up my stairs, they start barking at it. If a squirrel climbs in the tree in front of our house on the porch, they will bark at it. I do go out and check on them to see what they're barking at, just to make sure everything's okay. I crate my dogs at night in separate rooms, so when I let them out in the morning, they are happy to see each other and to be out of their crates. I should not be continually harassed by my neighbors about my dogs since I have done everything to please them and minimize my dogs' barking. Something needs to be done to stop neighbors from harassing their neighbors and calling the police when their dogs are just barking at what is normal for dogs. And I do want to address this incident the other day. My dogs were up on the porch, they were playing, they were having fun. For maybe 10 minutes, I was down in the kennel, straightening it out so I could put the dog in, I was trying to rush to work. And my neighbor came out, he saw me come up to the porch, started yelling, "I hate your dogs," you know, going on. The police were called out there again. I was not breaking any rule, I was not breaking any law. My dogs were under the 30-minute ordinance where they could bark, they were way under because I know these neighbors will call the police. So I only let them out five or 10 minutes. So the neighbor coming over harassing me was way out of bounds, he should never have done that. The police should never have had to waste their time to come to my house because there was no rule broken, no law broken, nothing. And this is what I'm having to deal with. The neighbors that have never complained this whole six months, or however long it's been, saw the Chief Adams there and pulled him over and said he had complained to me when he hadn't. In fact, later on that afternoon, I went and asked him, "Why did he say he had complained when he never did, him or his wife?" And all he had to say was shut my mouth and go in the house. So these are the kind of neighbors that I'm dealing with, with my dog. Now, I went to my neighbors, I live in a circle, and I went to them and I asked them, "Do my dogs cause any problems? Are you hearing them barking a lot?" They all signed it and said no, you know.
Ms. Rankin, let me ask you, is the problem just one particular person?
It's this one person...
I don't need to know who it is or anything. Is it just one person?
It's two that live on the same property and now there's another one right next...
Two different neighbors that are complaining?
Three now, because this one's joined in with them.
Okay.
And there's one way down the street that how he can see any dog or anything between the trees, I don't know.
I really don't know what we can do tonight. Chief Adams, perhaps we could get together...
It was discussed in the ordinance meeting last week, we were trying to come up with a resolution on that.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, Ms. Rankin, if we may, Mr. Henning and I were talking about that. That is something that we did bring up during our ordinance review meeting last week and I believe Mr. Henning and I will continue to look at that to see to where we can add some type of content to bring back to the council about habitual complaints or if it's a malicious complaint.
Okay.
But it may be, I mean, we've got two different ordinance here with this. I don't know about any 30-minute limit, but both you have an animal ordinance and a noise ordinance that both deal with reasonable interference, you know, unreasonable interference with somebody using their property. That's in the discretion, as you all remember, when we adopted the noise ordinance, that's in the discretion of your sound discretion, your police officers. And they haven't found any unreasonable, to my knowledge, any unreasonable interference here. So it may well be that the remedy for somebody who feels somebody maliciously prosecuting them is just that, it's a civil remedy that would not involve the town if the town's not sighted anybody. So we have looked into this and will continue to do so. We'll get back to the council with anything that will need your assistance to resolve.
Okay, and I do want to add too, as I had these different people sign it in my circle and across the street, they did mention, many of them mentioned, that there's a dog behind us somewhere that barks a lot. And they said it's probably that dog that's barking during the day.
Ms. Rankin, if you would give that to the town clerk, please ma'am, we'll enter it into the record.
Okay.
And thank you so much for coming tonight and hopefully something will get resolved.
All right, thank you.
We are working on it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Certainly. Okay, that was the only person who signed up for public comment. Next item is a presentation from Mission Health, Ms. Gordy. And I see you have Ms. Drewett with you also, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the time. So I just wanted to provide an update on our engagement with HCA. And so if you remember back in March, we signed a letter of intent with HCA to partner with them moving forward. And so I walked through the process, where we're at and what some of the steps are and expectations for the community. So going through this process is sort of like dating. So we announced our letter of intent and then next we started doing what's due diligence. So we did due diligence for HCA, we provided them with over 25,000 documents. And in the last probably six weeks, HCA has been doing site visits at all the mission facilities, including here in Angel Medical Center. So that really, to me, was very engaging because we gave them a lot of information, they actually read it and wanted to come and see what we had given them in the documentation. So we're almost finished with our due diligence and we're going to start that next phase of the process, which is to come up with a definitive agreement. So we hope to have that definitive agreement done by the middle of August and then the definitive agreement will go to the Attorney General of the state. And we hope that by the end of the year, they'll be rolling as far as if we can proceed to be a partner with HCA or not. So that's where we're at right now with the process. Anybody have any questions? Okay. So why HCA? So in looking at the healthcare landscape, we know that it is very unstable at this point in time. When you look at government funding, which we are well over 70% Medicare/Medicaid in this region, it's very unpredictable. There's a thing called 340E, which is drug compensation for rural health, and that's being challenged as well by our government. And so that funding is decreasing moving into 2019. And so we've really, although not in financial distress right now, wanted to be sure that we can sustain healthcare in western North Carolina for the future. And so the board of Mission looked at a number of potential partners and after careful due diligence by the Mission Board chose HCA. And why they chose HCA is their mission really is in partnership with our mission. It's about providing high quality of care, it's about patient first. And so we look to add the innovation that they do matches our curiosity to make things better and improve healthcare delivery in this region. And so there was enough things that when we looked through that initial "why HCA", we felt that it was a good partnership. One of the other things that brings to this area an infrastructure to provide increased number of residents, so what's called our graduate medical education. And so most of you are familiar with Mayhuck, which is in Asheville. And so HCA has already talked with Mayhuck about providing additional residents here that are really linked to rural health. And the way that you can keep and recruit residents here is to have them in your area so that they get used to the community, appreciate the beauty of Franklin and the surrounding area and those kinds of things. So we're looking forward to having more residents at Angel Medical Center. Right now, Mayhuck only provides psychiatric residents and general surgery residents along with OP and their rural health. But with having access to the funds that HCA does with graduate medical education will really increase the number of residents. One of the other things that's really exciting is their cancer center. It's the Sarah Cannon Cancer Center. It's one of the country's renowned cancer institutes. They have over 75% of the research grants in the country. And so the only way that you can be part of Sarah Cannon is to be in HCA facility. And our oncologists really wanted to be part of Sarah Cannon long before there was ever any discussion with HCA. So what that does is, for those cancers that aren't in protocol that we're using now, we have access to all the research protocols. And so as you can see, but then having 75% of the research protocols in the country will have access to a lot of protocols to help our patients who suffer from cancer in this area. So another thing that really impressed me about HCA is their ability to help us with funding. So when you look at buying healthcare products, HCA gives healthcare products at the lowest cost in the market. And so when you're trying to have a margin in a hospital, if you can buy your supplies, your Band-Aids, your syringes, your perks cheaper, then you'll actually be able to have a margin. And it's really difficult in today's environment because as healthcare costs increase, at least five to seven percent a year, we have to then look at how do we keep maintaining a margin. So another reason that we looked at HCA is probably our biggest opportunity is our billing. And so HCA is a company called Paralon that's already used by a number of profit, non-for-profit companies across the United States. And so our billing system needed significant upgrading, that was millions and millions of dollars. And so with having that access to Paralon, then we will be able to improve that system almost immediately. So this slide just shows a snapshot of what HCA is and you can see across the top their hospitals, their ambulatory centers, their access centers, and also their physician practices. So although HCA doesn't have a large physician practice base, they're really interested in our mission medical associates. And so they want to learn from us as much as we want to learn from them about managing their physician practices. When you look at the base of that, I've already talked about the Health Trust, which is their buying group, Paralon, and there are a number of other support services that are directly connected to HCA. So how does it benefit our community? Well, the first and obvious piece is that it will then be a for-profit hospital and pay taxes. So that revenue base will really help our community here, not just from the town of Franklin, but also, I was at the county commission meeting a couple of weeks ago and they were talking about school funding and when you look at us and Highland Cashers both paying taxes, that's really going to increase the revenue base for the county. Also, when you look at the ability then for HCA and us to provide sustainable services here in western North Carolina, that's very significant. And I think the best benefit is the proceeds of the sale of Mission Health will form what's called the Dogwood Trust. The Dogwood Trust is a separate entity aside from HCA that will be ran by a separate board that will then provide healthcare benefits that today we just can't afford to do. So it's all of the social determinants of health, so getting people back and forth to their doctor's appointments, making sure that there's housing for people who are homeless, looking at medications that they can afford to buy and how can, you know, the foundation then be able to do grants that will provide medication, looking at the opioid crisis and seeing, you know, how do we help somewhere that's already in place in the community. And so it will be a similar foundation to like the Duke Foundation, although this foundation will have the highest per capita dollars available than any foundation across the country. So it'll only be focused in the 18 counties in western North Carolina. Any questions about that? So I've got some cards for you and I'll give them to Summer. It has the website where all the frequently asked questions are regarding HCA. So if people have questions, we're updating that website, so I'll give you that. And then I just wanted to give you an update on the new hospital. So part of the letter of intent was the commitment from HCA to build a new hospital. And so we are right now validating our space plan. The next stage then will come up with our bridging documents. And so then we'll be able to, once we have bridging documents, do an R F E or request for proposal for a design architect. We're going to use a different process, the design architect process, where the same person who designs it does the architectural work. And then we will choose a builder and start doing our plans. Once we get those plans about 75% complete, then we will apply for a special use permit through the town of Franklin. And then once that's approved, then we'll hire proposed site. And our plan right now is to move into the facility in the winter of 2022, which seems like a long time, but you know, how time flies, this year's almost halfway over, so. So that's my update and if you have questions, yes, sir.
I have a question. It sounds mostly positive, the HCA v. Mission Health, but it's supposed to, I mean, is there, can you be objective and tell us what any potential downsides of the merger are going to be to this community?
To the community? No. You know, when we looked at the opportunity and the sustainability of a new medical center, there really aren't any downsides to this community.
Ms. Gordy, I have a question. I'm concerned that no one from HCA has come here. I did get the opportunity, but it had to be 30 minutes in the hospital and it was a day when I could not get to it one time. Where is HCA? Is it going to have a huge impact on this community?
Well, that day, it was the lead of this division, he was there, Chuck Hall, and he was only at Angel Medical Center for probably about four hours. And we've had a number of other folks come from different departments that I'm sure that if you want to speak with someone, you probably want to speak with somebody in leadership.
I think we would like to speak to somebody in executive position with HCA. This has a huge impact on this town.
It does, yeah, it's a very positive impact. And we'll talk to Rowena and see what we can arrange.
I would appreciate that. How's the board feel about having somebody from HCA come and talk to this board?
Be very positive.
I just want to sound a little note of caution, and I know this is a delicate topic. I would not ask you as the council for the town to not take an interest in who the primary medical provider is going to be. Keep in mind though, in the presentation just mentioned, that there is a special use permit process that's going to follow this as far as the land use goes. So you need to be very careful in your comments to remain, you know, in what you investigate in it and how you comment on it. I think that, you know, the quality and character of your healthcare provision is one thing. I think that if any of you stake yourselves out is, you know, "I'm going to prevent this come hell or high water" or something like that, you probably are too biased to sit through a special use hearing. So just something to keep in mind. And a delicate topic, again, happy to help advise on that as I can as you go along, please keep it in mind.
Donnie, go ahead.
I was just going to say, in light of that, do you see that it would not be something we need to delve into about speaking with HCA because of this coming up?
Let me continue to evaluate that somewhat. This is not the only show in town, every single, you know, every single town in western North Carolina is looking at this to some degree and I don't know...
I personally don't have any questions, so it's not something that I feel that, but...
Let me give that part some thought, it's going to take some legwork before we know what that opportunity is anyway.
This question may be premature, but I mean, you guys seem to have your ducks in a row, or at least lining them up in a row. Is there any prospect to the future of the old hospital, the old hospital site that you can see on the horizon?
Yeah, I think there is a prospect. I think it's too early to start having those discussions till we get plans and, but I think there is a prospect. We're keeping that open.
Any chance that HCA feels better about labor and delivery being a part of this hospital?
So, you know, when you look at, we still have to make a margin. And as you're aware, you know, the decision to close labor and delivery was really about sustainability of the hospital and the bottom line and those folks that make up this market. When you look at Medicare population here, you know, it is the growing population and so, you know, I'll never say never, but you have to look at what the population is and how we can be supportive. And, you know, that was 77% Medicaid was our payer from the women's service line and so that makes it very difficult for it to be a profitable service. And I'm sure that whatever HCA, when they look at the future, will do, they'll do their due diligence and, you know, do the cost benefit analysis.
How much say do you guys have in the design of the site or is HCA going to have control of the design of the hospital?
Right now, we're proceeding with design of the site from a mission perspective, so you have to keep in mind that Mission Health will be the regional provider and so we'll have, still, the name Mission Health will still have the same leadership in place and so, you know, we've been in the community and know what the needs of the community are, so right now we're continuing to do our design or at least our space plan.
The reason for my question, piggybacking on Joe here, is I think labor and delivery is going to be necessary in this community in the future. I don't know if that's five years from now or 10 years from now, but in the design of the building, if it could be left open and it tour, you can add a wing relatively easily, I think that would be wise planning for the future.
Yeah, and actually, and Joe knows this, the space plan does have that. So we have considered that and where it would go, so, yeah. We're just updating the space plan right now because even from the time we first did it, so today, healthcare has changed and we've added a lot of telemedicine and so we have to put space in the hospital somewhere for telemedicine. So, you know, we're trying to make sure we're building for the future and that is in the plan.
Is there a question for the board? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next item is a street closing request for Japaka and the person making the request is not here. Is anybody representing Japaka? Madam Manager, Mr. Councilman, I don't know what we can do.
Typical practices, then this entity's not here, we don't act on it, or the council doesn't act on it, again, if you want to.
Does anybody want to act on it at this rate?
What is the date of this?
A move to dismiss for failure to prosecute, that's what we're saying for.
The 28th?
It's, we won't have another meeting before, it's this month. It's a two, three-day event.
I'd really like to see something get off the ground with Japaka, but I don't know that, I don't know that we can deny or approve anything.
Okay, I guess, it's a big question.
Move on.
It's okay. All right. Do we need to...
I was going to say, just for Mr. Lepers personal information, since he's missed this, is there any process he can go through, Lepers should advise on that?
The only next process would be unfortunately given the date so that it be in February, or excuse me, July 27th, the next council meeting wouldn't be till August. So I guess moving forward, if he's wanting to do a street closing request and he sees that he can't be here, maybe do it a couple of months in advance, that would be the only recourse I could foresee in the future, is your attorney?
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, I don't know that you legally couldn't act on it, it's just not been your practice and I think it's a decent practice to have, if somebody wants to request some action on your behalf.
Well, I don't know what the purpose of the street closing is. We don't know, just closing the street arbitrarily, without knowing the purpose.
It's a pretty long time too that he's requesting. It's a pretty long time, too, that he's requesting.
I think, John, don't you think the appropriate thing would just motion to table it?
Okay. Good. Second? Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, another street closing request, Madam Manager. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I skipped you, Mr. Gibbs. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. This is started out on the wrong foot tonight.
I'm just riding away, man, it's all good.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I appreciate you guys putting me on your agenda for this request. I'm here representing Macon County Schools as the Director of Auxiliary Services, which Maintenance and Transportation falls under. In the late 90s, did you guys get the letter without typing it out? Okay, so I don't need to go into all the background. What we would like to do is, Macon County Schools would like to facilitate the trailer park that's located next to us in the Brick House being connected to municipal water due to the underground storage tank that leaked back in the late 90s. As you know, when you find an underground storage tank that leaks, then you're on what I call the state's naughty list. And when that happens, for good reasons, obviously, when that happens, there are requirements, stipulations that the owner of that underground storage tank has to do to make sure that that leakage does not leak into anybody's water supply well. That has not happened in this case through all the testing that's been done since the late 90s. And recently, the water supply well in that trailer park has never tested positive for any gasoline or byproducts from that leakage. There are eight monitoring wells around our property just for that purpose. And the only well that has ever shown any byproduct in the monitoring well is the monitoring well that is the closest to where the tank was taken out of the ground. Now the other monitoring wells have shown any gasoline byproduct, and neither has the water supply well. But the only way to ensure that that trailer park and that house there are never going to have an issue with their water supply is to hook them up to municipal water supply. And that's what we're trying to do. That also removes Macon County Schools from the state, North County Department of Waste off of their list so that we do not have to continue to monitor all eight wells and the water supply well. So we're asking, Macon County Schools is asking that the town council consider waiving of fees or a partial waiving of the water tap fees and availability fees so that we can make this happen. All the fees to hook up to the water would ultimately come out of our capital outlay budget, which we received from the Macon County Commission. So I'm really on behalf of the taxpayers also of Macon County. Questions? Yes, sir.
That trailer park, one landowner, I take it, probably owns that, and are they rented trailer sites?
Yes, ma'am. All except one. There's one double-wide on the corner that is closest to the Macon County School Board. That is its own separate entity owned by the people who own that double-wide trailer and that piece of land that's on. The rest of it is all one piece of land that is owned by the people who live in the Brick House.
What about in addition to that? I mean, are they aware of this situation? Do they know that you've approached the town about doing this?
Yes, ma'am. I've talked to the owners of the Brick House twice. Once, when I first learned about this, the start of last year. Another time, just trying to get their bead on. And I've also talked to the people on the double-wide trailer, they're Hispanic. And I use one of our school's translators, bilingual people, to talk to them about what we're trying to do. And ensuring then that their water supply well has never tested with any byproduct gasoline or byproduct.
And what about the, once they're hooked on, whatever we decide to do, what about who's paying the bills each month?
Well, I tried to make it as clear as I could that would, we don't want, the school system does not want to be burdened to pay those water bills forevermore. So we're hoping that by facilitating the hookup, that they'll also write letters understanding that they are responsible for the monthly water bills.
But they haven't actually agreed to any of that?
No, not yet, because I'm, right now, I'm in the process of determining the actual cost for the school system before I actually go down with the letter saying this is, we're going to actually do this. If it's an exorbitant cost where the school system, it's not financially smart to do that, we'll just keep monitoring, then it's a wash, and I don't need to get those letters from those people.
No, you asked.
I'm just curious, the same units, the same house has been there all the time since this originally happened?
Yes, ma'am. As far as I know, yes, ma'am. Those trailers have been there for as long as I can remember.
Okay, and how many are there?
There are six trailers, the double-wide, that's its own separate piece, and the...
The house?
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of things. Have you explored whether or not there'll be any insurance coverage?
Yes, sir. The superintendent directed me to do that this afternoon. Not sure where I'm going to go with that, but I will research that to see if there's...
And how many actual taps and availability fees are we talking about? At least two, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. That was my vision. Probably need to talk to Mr. Jay Gibson and Mr. Moore. I'm not an engineer of any sort. My vision would be one tap for the separate double-wide and one tap for the well which supplies the house and all the trailers. But we would do it, one separate tap for the double-wide that's separate and one tap for the house that is a landlord, if you will, as far as I can tell, for the trailers.
And if they were to get taps to whatever, whoever pays for it, couldn't realistically they just keep using the well water until it goes bad instead of paying the town any money for water each month?
I suppose that would be an option. I'd thought about that.
Then you'd have to keep monitoring them if they were going to keep using the well. You'd have to keep monitoring by the state.
Yeah, I think that's correct, but I would need to check with the state people first that we would still be on the hook to do the monitoring if they're not, if they don't hook. I think the bottom line, you're right, is municipal water will end that monitoring of the wells in the spot.
I don't, I don't know that I can make a decision without knowing that all those people would want to sign on to paying for their own water. But you mentioned earlier that you represent the taxpayer, I mean, we are too, though. And if we ask our townspeople to pay for the tap fee, I mean, they're already double taxed because they're paying county taxes and city taxes. I'm just not sure they're getting a fair shake. So we need to look at it more and kind of see. If the people wanted to sign on, I think we could probably work something out, but I think we'd need to see that those people would actually want to sign on, pay their municipal water bill every single month, without you guys having to pay it, without us certainly not having to pay it.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, if the council wants any additional information, I know our town engineers worked on a proposal for you guys. One thing to keep in mind that I wasn't aware of, I was under their pressure to have one tap, so that may change some of his figures. So what we can do, if the board wants to just take this under advisement and give us some time to our next town council meeting to let us internally get a little bit more information, we can certainly do that for the board.
Consensus of the board? Okay, I see a lot of non-yes. I guess that's where we are.
I also need to take this opportunity to disclose, you all know that I represent Macon County Schools as well, so any involvement I would have in it, I would need to get both parties to waive the conflict that I have here. I think it may not even take much advice in terms of what you all work out between you, but what's acceptable versus just drafting a contract. And I think a contract that would bring in the proposed new customers and have some, you know, some sort of assurance that they're going to become down customers and not use that well might be necessary. But just if, since we have some time to do that, I'll bring it back to your, for your consideration next month.
Consensus, sir?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming. Yes, sir. All right, I think I'm right now. We have, we're up to the street closing request, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Board. What you have before you tonight is a street closing from, the first one is called Chepers Creepers Trunk or Treat. And it is a fundraiser on October the 27th. They're requesting to close the street from 4:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. And it's basically a benefit for Kieranet and Habitat for Humanity, and Dave Lynch will be putting that on. So the first request is to close Iowa Street, October 27th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00. The second request you have in your packet is to close Iowa Street, again, it looks like on Friday, September the 28th, for at least two hours while they have the Grammy Award winner, Mike Ferris, there for Riverpoint Church. It's an outreach coordinator for the event, "We're Coming Together" as a community. So you have two street closings, I think.
What was the date on that one? Yeah, I'm sorry.
The second one was Friday, September the 28th.
And that would be, the time would be...
They don't have a specific time, but from, based on my phone call conversations, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. It's actually All Saints Episcopal Church is hosting. It's called "Come Together." And we're asking for the road to be closed between the hours of 4 o'clock for setup and 9 o'clock for teardown in the evening.
And that, what day of the week is it?
It's a Friday evening.
Friday.
I would just caution the council, too, just on previous requests, since this is business down to Friday, is there any way maybe they could consider looking at at least 5 o'clock for setup?
Five, I feel good.
Possibly, yeah. The event itself will run, it'll begin at 5:30. I've got five presenters with 10 to 15-minute slots. And then the finale is Mike Ferris doing his testimony and performance. So we foresee, you know, not, not a lot of setup.
I would make the motion that we allow it from 5 o'clock until the, a reasonable time. You figure 9 o'clock at the latest on September 28th, and then the 4 to 7 on October 27th. That's my motion.
Second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? It brings up something to think about in the future, and I know it may sound kind of strange, but someday we might want to consider making Iowa Street a plaza. And tie it into the courthouse.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And just close from Crab Creek down to Main and make that a plaza. All in favor of making that a plaza?
Obviously.
They did, didn't they? It was, yes. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. All right, set public hearing for unified development ordinance text amendment? Mr. Speaker, you're up, sir.
Anything, Councilor Mayor? Now, we're here for is, last month, come for you with a text amendment in the U D O for changes for sidewalk requirements. Our town planning board met on June the 18th to discuss that, and after the discussion, they recommended to approve that. And I'm just here tonight to set the hearing for August to get in more detail.
Okay, any discussion from the board?
Should we ask just some questions about this right now?
This is supposed to set the hearing, right?
Yeah, just setting a hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I should say it for the hearing, I should start asking questions now. Council?
It's entirely up to the council, but I mean, it's, you're not legally required to set a hearing on a text amendment you don't want to consider, but if the council wants to consider it, the only way to do it is set the public hearing. So if you need discussion to determine whether or not the council wants to go to a public hearing and consider adopting, then it would be wise to have it.
I mean, just, my concern is, I think we've neglected building sidewalks for 30 years in this town. I mean, I want sidewalks to get built. I'm worried if we require them to be five foot wide instead of three foot wide, that that will actually inhibit our ability to build future sidewalks. Have you looked into that as part of the text amendment?
I mean, you might run that in some places, but I mean, it was recommended in our bike plan to go from, but right now it's stated it's required to be four feet, which is not ADA compliant, and five feet is the minimum requirement. So that was what the recommendation was through our bike plan that was adopted. And so I was just going through with that. I mean, we might run it, not, I'm not saying the town's going, do go out and start ripping up every floor, but a sidewalk gets to be, and start changing it next week, but over time, if something needs replaced, you know.
Let's say we wanted to put a sidewalk on Baird Cove or something like that, or Wilkie Street, or somewhere where there's a lot of trick-or-treaters and pedestrian traffic. We would have to comply to five foot wide, no matter the conditions, the street conditions, the volume of traffic, or do we have flexibility?
If it was in our U D O, I'm of my own perception, if it's in our U D O, that we would need to comply, same as a residency might have to build as well.
And the town does have the ability to apply for a variance from its own rules. So again, if you, I just have a hard time believing that any, you know, any community with an up-to-date zoning code that calls for sidewalks isn't coming to an ADA standard as a presumed.
I understand, but I mean, there's places, a lot of places in this town where a one-foot or a two-foot sidewalk would be amazingly appreciated where there's just nothing but a ditch on the side of the road. I worry that we're not going to be able to fit five feet in a lot of places where I want to see sidewalks.
I'm with you.
And I also concern about the cost of it. I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean, I would love to see five-foot sidewalks all over the town. I just don't want to stop us from putting in a three-foot or a four-foot sidewalk because it becomes a budget share issue, because our budget's thin in a couple of years, and we say, hey, well, we're scratching that 300-foot of sidewalk we had planned because it's 40% more now than it was going to be.
And piggybacking on that, because I want some sidewalks, I want us to be able to rebuild sidewalks in the same footprint that we're taking them out. Because most places, as you go up these streets, which I hope our own crew starts to do fairly soon, if we have to stop and go buy more easements and get more width and get more, it would just really, really could be an impediment. I would hope that we could rebuild to the same widths that we have now. And if there's something coming in the U D O that would prevent that, I'd like to see it.
I mean, we have some places where you have four foots, and then we have like a two-foot planting strip or a foot planting strip. I mean, you could go closer to the road to get your five foot. And, you know, like Harrison Avenue, for example, has that planting strip, which I think's about two feet. So you have places that, we have some area to work, and plus, you know, we might have areas where we have a wider, we might have room on the other side to go a foot or two because of the roadway. But I haven't dabbled that much into it in depth.
Yeah, I think where it's possible to have a five-foot one, it certainly is desirable.
For sure.
For sidewalks, a lot of sidewalks. When you're walking with somebody and everybody has to go single file because there's bushes going over.
I mean, there's places we've got a four-foot sidewalk and it's right against the road.
Yeah, that's dangerous.
It's unnerving.
Is there language we could, we could put in where we accounted for the volume of traffic? I mean, where we can have a five-foot sidewalk, definitely let's put a five-foot sidewalk. But if it's going to be cost prohibitive, I'd like for you or us to have some leeway within our own ordinance instead of having to get a variance from our own ordinance, which sounds extremely hypocritical. If there was language in there where we could do what we needed to do and provide sidewalks because we haven't for 30 years, I don't want to inhibit that in any way, shape, or form. Like I said, a two-foot sidewalk would be welcome in a lot of places. So some sort of language that allows some flexibility and doesn't tie our hands behind our back, I think would be welcome.
The existing sidewalks would be grandfathered retard.
It would be, and I don't know whether, it might be possible to make them, you know, some permission says that they're, if you rebuild the same footprint, you can rebuild them in that same convention. Certainly, I think all of that's quite possible. I'd be happy to look into it.
I guess what I'm hearing from the board, such as, I think there was some flexibility and what, I think there's a little concern about likely.
Would you rather, in John, try to put some word in it currently or put so many... Would you rather, in John, try to put some word in, in it currently, or put somebody and send it back to planning board?
Whatever's the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, if it doesn't have flexibility in it, I don't, I wouldn't need to have a public hearing to look at it. I mean, I, I would want to have flexibility in there before.
Currently as it written, it was strictly striking out to four to five is in the text, is all we were doing.
I don't want to go there.
Yeah. I only see new sidewalks more than anybody, but I gotta agree with Dave that I would like to see it. You know, and I agree that the five-foot, five-foot sidewalks are definitely desirable. I mean, for safety, for convenience, for comfort, appearance, everything, but I would hate to see an area not get sidelined because it wasn't physically possible in that area or cost prohibitive or whatever. I'm kind of with Dave on that one. That's my feeling.
It sounds like the thing to do might be to forward it back to planning board to take it and send it to the administration.
Let them argue all these points, I'm sure they will, discuss them.
I just want to defend the notion, very briefly, of a, of a self-initiated variance proceeding. It's, it's not hypocritical to say, we own this property and it's only this wide, and there's no, there isn't five feet here, there's three feet. That's a variance, that's a good case.
If you're having to make variances to your own ordinances, maybe the ordinance shouldn't have existed in the first place.
Could, if you break in your own rules, change the rules.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Setzer, could you possibly work, or Counselor, where you could put some discretion in there to make it the width after the town engineer and the planning director, if they get together, I mean, does it need, does something like that need to come back before the board to decide whether it needs to be three or five?
Well, we'd have to vote on the final product, so I guess.
It would, it will have to come back and go and...
But it would be...
If we did not be there discretion, though, since they're the experts on this and know the situation.
We could, that's one of the number of variety, variety of possible solutions that we can look at for flexibility. We'll, we'll see whether that's possible.
How's that with board?
I would let the town engineer and the town planner evaluate each situation on an individual basis.
Individual basis?
I would, I would be in favor of that.
How do you all feel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. As far as any new sidewalks built, they are required to meet ADA standards. That is new sidewalk, and that is five-foot wide with the proper programs on. Now, as far as rehabilitating some of our own, we can do some maintenance at first without having to put those up to current standards. But anything new does have to meet those ADA standards for the town to stay on the liability issue.
But are there, I mean, in any code, in any regulation, there's usually exemptions. I'm certain that the state has put exemptions in that wording.
Not that I know of. Typically, if, if there's an issue with right-of-way, that they either don't put their...
Is there kind of time limit on this where we can?
No, Mr. Mayor and Council, what we may, I think there's some discussion that we can have at a staff level and also at a planning board level, so I think it would be more appropriate tonight is just to go ahead and forward this back to the planning board and let staff make some recommendations, and this will come back up for you guys to set a date when we get some issues worked out on our end. If that's kosher with council.
Just quickly, a prime example of what I'm talking about, Nathaniel and I have talked about it. I wanted, for safety's issue, but, but the state's safety issues are making a situation much more dangerous than they could be if we had some flexibility. And that's putting a crosswalk in a pathway into Memorial Park from our existing sidewalk in front of the police department. Apparently that's not possible because we have to conform to whatever the state's specifications are. So instead, there's children, like 30 to 50 at a time, crossing from the learning center across the street at a non-crosswalk intersection, then walking down a street that doesn't have a sidewalk, up another street that doesn't have a sidewalk, behind private property to get into our park. So there's clearly regulations that don't make sense, that make things more dangerous, and we need to not have to abide by those. And we should not pass regulations that make situations more dangerous. We should make it a pedestrian-friendly town, we should make it easier for people to navigate by foot, and I don't want to do anything to impede that. I think we need to lay sidewalk, and I don't want to stop us from laying sidewalk.
But if the state's saying it has to be ADA compliant, I mean, we're just gonna not follow the law.
You've got to read, you've got to read the state code. The state code's probably 45 pages long and has a whole list of exemptions.
We can't change the state.
I understand, but there's usually exemptions you can look at.
There may be, and they're there or not, but we can't make the exemptions. So if a man says...
We can apply for them.
You make it strict, can't we, Joe? We make it go up, but you can't go down.
Can we apply for variances to state sidewalk code?
I mean, when the town is constructing something, you'd be as able as any other applicant for a building code to permit to, yeah, to take, you know, some sort of exception, just like the UDO.
All right, well, it's, I think what the consensus, I'm seeing it's gonna go back to planning board and bring in the consideration, our concerns. Does that agree with everybody? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Moore, sir, you're up with a water treatment plant change order.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and Councilor. What I have in front of you is a change order for the water treatment plant project that is currently under construction. This change order came as a no-cost change order to the town. So basically, the three items in this change order are to incorporate a work change directive that we have set forth, that has had the contractor to start back work immediately after some sole conditions for one of the buildings were found. We worked through those problems and found a solution that I feel like, in my opinion, is a better option for the town, and is actually a better design ultimately for all users involved. Because of the time we had to stop work, we, that, this is an increase in time of 90 days, that's basically one-to-one from the time that they had to stop work to the time they started back. So that still puts us at a substantial completion date, December 4th, and a final completion date of January 3rd. And the third item for this work change order is the changing of the actual contract drawings. So basically, the drawings that we had changed, we just need to contractually put those in and lock them into the contract, is all it is. From the original contract documents, basically, this change order, to make the project complete, if we use the original drawings, we were going to have to require basically a $97,000 increase in the project. And with this work change directive and change order, we were able to keep the project at the original contract bid price and saving the town roughly $100,000.
I'll vote for that.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Is that a motion?
Motion as we adopt the changes as he's...
Second. All right, all in favor? I don't think there was any discussion. Thank you, sir. Okay. All right. Madam Manager, we have a reportment from the town tax collector.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilor. What you have before you tonight is a reappointment of the town tax collector. We did this on a trial basis a few months ago, and it's worked out very well. So the, we're asking tonight to reappoint Sabrina Scruggs as the town tax collector for a one-year appointment, which would end July the 1st of 2019.
Okay, any discretion? If not, I'll entertain the motion. Brad's gonna make the motion.
Yeah, I will reappoint Sabrina.
I'll stay. All in favor? All right. Okay, a resolution authorizing the town tax collector to collect 2018 taxes. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilor. By law, as you know, we now have to authorize our town tax collector to collect the 2018 taxes, so we had asked that you adopt the resolution as presented tonight.
Do I have a motion that we collect taxes?
Second, is there downside to this?
I'm surprised you're voting for this.
I'm surprised you have to vote for something like this. That seems relatively silly.
I assume that passed.
Thank you.
All right. Application for fiscal year 2018 to 2019 nonprofit funding pool. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilor. What you have before you, just for information purposes, send your agenda packet. I've also got with town clerk Travis Talent in regards to advertising in the local newspaper about application deadlines. But as you can see, here's the application for the nonprofit funding pool. They're gonna be due, um, obviously 20th at 5:00 PM. So this is just for information to pass out along to the news media and radio as well. The applications are now open.
Okay. All right, any questions? Okay. Presentation on the downtown parking trial. Mr. Setzer and Mr. Moore.
So back, I believe on March the 23rd was when we began our new downtown parking trial from right here at Baton Avenue down to the square. We ran it, decided council wanted to run it for at least a 90-day period, see how it went. And also in that timeframe, we adopted or created a survey, given citizens, merchants, visitors, anybody a chance to comment on the pattern and see what their thoughts on it, and if they loved it or hated, or wanted suggestions or so on. So I was gonna go through the survey, and the question in the survey, and Nathaniel was gonna get a little bit more into the details of the actual parking design. So the survey was available online and in the office. People would come in, pick one up, and they could either mail it in, they could email it in, they could bring one in and drop it off, and I even took a few by phone. We just called them, give some pens, and write them down and put it in the packet. The, there was, it was one page, it was short, it was a short survey, and asking simple questions, that if you tried the new spots, yes or no, did you find it easier, easy to do, yes or no? If no, what did you not like about the pattern? Thoughts about wider lanes, thoughts about the crosswalks, if it was easier to see in the crosswalks, and then additional comments or suggestions. From that, we suggested we collected 47 total surveys. Of the 47, 33 were positive in favor of the current design. 13 were negative, and it's just wanted to go back to the way it was originally. And then we had one that actually suggested no parking on Main Street, just to have travel lanes open. So that was roughly 70 in a 28% of the 47, that was either for or against. Then from the 30, I broke it down further, from the 33 that liked it to the 13 that were, did not like it. 11 of the 33 that liked the current pattern or the trial pattern, liked it, had no further suggestions, they just liked the way it was, they thought it was perfect, which was 33% of the 33. Nine suggested that we have it on both sides, nine, nine comments. And some of these are multiples, people make four or five comments on one, so some of the numbers might be a little, might wonder how this adds up. Was four wanted to see two-way traffic, that was 12% of the 33. Six said there was still an issue with long trucks and vans on the left side where the angled parking is currently still. Two would like to see a parking garage or parking deck built in town somewhere. Two suggested that we add green spaces to the street, you know, trees, shrubbery, something on Main Street. 11 says that the crosswalks were more visible, people felt like they could be seen in the crosswalks easier. One suggested making Main Street one lane. One would like to see better handicap signs, which we have addressed. Two suggested there was an issue with merchant parking on Main Street, and 13 liked the wider lanes of travel coming through, because we added, lanes were about a foot wider on these, both lanes about a foot wider. Then the dislocks, of course, there was 13 that disliked, five disliked it and had no suggestions, just were, put it back the way it was. So it's very simple. Two suggested that the wider lanes would increase speeding. One suggested that the new pattern would slow down traffic and take too long for people to park, they were worried about somebody waiting in the back end, hitting parallel spots. One said it took away too many spots. Two said that the, almost caused an accident while they were parking. And with that one, I've talked to our police chief, and the whole time of the 90 days, we had no issues, no fender benders or accidents with the parking pattern. And then two said they just simply would like it to go back to the old pattern, but without the large vehicles, so it would be us having some sort of ordinance or a policy or something, not allowing. And then I broke it down, because the large vehicles were mentioned a couple of times, it was, of the 47 total, 17% mentioned that something about the large vehicle being the issue, either liking it or disliking it. Any questions on the survey for handing over the thing?
Yes, Brandon.
You've told us before, but what was the, the change in the number of available spaces going from angled to parallel?
We, I don't remember the total number we had before, but I know we lost three spots and four total, but one was to the loading zone that we wanted to have. So it says three was what we lost by the parallel.
And the person who mentioned green space on the streets, if we, if we eventually, when they did the bulb outs, those would include some green space.
That is an idea, that's what the drawings we have in front of you, that was preliminary drawings that could happen to be added. Nathaniel can talk a bit more about the drawings going forward.
Is this a possibility, these drawings?
Yes, so those are actually the start of working with DOD to get this, to get ultimately this done. So they are completely up to start this. Roughly, we should be able to start this project sometime this fall and have it completed in the spring. Now, what we eventually have to do is figure out, because of the bulb outs, what type of parking pattern the board would like to have for Main Street, so we can work on finalizing our designs with us here in-house and NC DOT collaborate to get that correct, because the bulb out lengths will completely depend on the style of parking we'll have. As y'all know, our temporary solution up here is starting to degrade rapidly, and since our 90 days is complete, we were seeing what the board would like to do to have a semi-permanent solution, whether to go back to the angle like it was, or we work on doing just a paint solution until we can work with DOT to get this project finished.
How long would it take to put the paint down if you were to start this?
As far as time-wise to do it, to get a contractor lined up and to come out and paint, we should have that done within the month, depending on contractor schedules. I've reached out to a couple and got some preliminary prices to see when they would be able to come, and they were pretty free within the next couple of weeks, I could get someone out here to get that started.
Let me ask the board something here, if you will. I know y'all are all in contact with people all the time, and what are, what are you getting the feeling of from the community, if you don't mind my AC and S, Brandon?
Overwhelmingly positive. I'll all agree, we've gotten a lot of positivity, especially as time's going on, where people continue to pour in a positive feedback and bless people.
Very positive.
Yeah.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah.
And if y'all have seen my car lately, you'll know that all those scratches came from somewhere else. I've actually been able to park on Main Street without hitting any...
These drawings are awesome, and, and with the bulb outs being a possibility in the foreseeable future, this design of a bulb outs really lends itself to having parallel parking on both sides. Is that an option we can pursue?
If the board would like to move forward with that, anything is parallel angle, 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 I mean, anything could be an option.
Well, it's just so much safer crossing the crosswalk on the parallel side than it is poking your head out on the angled side.
Let's, let me ask the board if, if, if we would have a motion that we, you made... Let me ask the board, if we would have a motion that we, you mentioned semi-permanent, that meant paint.
Yeah.
And go ahead and put this into place, what we've got right now, we paint instead of the tape. John, do we need any kind of special motion to do that?
No, sir, it's entirely in the council's discretion. And I mean, I think from a practical standpoint, approving that one, and then you can study the other side, you know, later, would be, and discuss it by all means, but I think that's...
Would somebody like to make something?
Could we do? Go ahead, Joe.
If we're going to do that, which I think we should, I'd want to go ahead and go to Harrison Avenue on the right side with parallel, while we're doing it now. If we're going to leave the left side the way it is, and maybe we should for now, maybe we should, but I certainly would want to see the right side uniform.
That would just be in front of the courthouse, wouldn't it?
Pretty much. Russell's already in the courthouse.
Yeah, great.
That was a comment that I got from somebody that, like, did we continue it all the way, you know, yeah?
Is there any problem with you guys?
As far as phasing in, I think the first thing, because really the design and layout is what takes the time behind the scenes to get it put in, we have all this that we've currently done, so I think that would be our first step to get that done first, and then we can work on getting it all the way down on that side parallel. So that might be a little later, you know, several weeks down the road, we don't...
What take, whatever takes?
Yeah, we could just maybe do it in two phases, just with the council understanding it may be a couple of weeks before we can do it.
Been years.
That works, that's true.
We don't want to do plans and then change it after we do plans. I mean, you don't want to have your plans laid out, your bulb out footprint, and then go back and change it to parallel parking, or go back and change it to angled parking on the south side after the fact, right?
Once we put the bulb outs in, those bulb out lengths are going to determine what we're going to have ultimately.
So what is on us tonight? I mean, if we want to change, do we need to change it, or?
I think what we're looking for tonight is if the council would like, we could do a semi-permanent, get rid of the tape, put some paint down in the section that we've already done, so we can have, it'll, the lifespan of this is up, basically.
Going back to what Mr. Collins said, what would it take just to do those spots there in front of the courthouse and edge?
To go all the way down? It would just take a little bit more time of design and layout.
I know, they do, the county has one place for law enforcement vehicles, but it's already parallel.
We're only talking about six spaces.
That's what I'm thinking about, yeah.
Yeah, it would, it's completely doable. Like I said, the first phase, I think we just need to do this up here, and then probably can work on all the way down.
I think what Dave is asking is if we go and memorialize what we have now with paint rather than tape, if in a few months' time, we get a plan for bulb outs and such, that means we might have to adjust those accordingly, right? But that's just spraying them out and re-spraying, I mean, that's not that hard to do.
We will, everything at the point when this project comes to fruition, we will have to change somewhat, everything. But that's not what we can do.
Okay. Do we need, I guess we need a motion?
Oh, yes. I was going to make a motion, let's go forward with this plan, and I'd like to add to change the south side to parallel parking as well. I'd like to make that motion, do this plan, do the bulb outs, start work on it, and let's make the whole thing parallel.
We need to discuss that parallel on the other side, because this hasn't come up before.
Now's the time for discussion, I mean...
I'll start it off, if I may.
Well, he's got a motion, and we need to get a second? Or not, John?
I have a procedural, you can entertain, if there's a second for the motion, you can discuss the merger.
Is there a second to making a?
I would like to discuss that. But a second is not in favor, it's just to advance.
Okay, I'll second, just for the sake of continuing discussion. If I can do that.
I think it'd be too much of a shock right now. I mean, as much as I'm for it in the long term, it may be as we sell to the public the bulb out approach, it may be that we can get some buy-in, but it would almost be deceptive if somebody would come and say, you just were talking the north side, and all of a sudden, voila, you know, so I'm...
You're absolutely right. Kind of on the fence, because I personally, I love it. Personally, I love the parallel. I feel so much safer walking down there with my family every Saturday, you know, and but I feel like there were, the science teacher, I mean, feels like we had a really small sample size on those surveys, but I know that you all did everything you could to get them out there, but there were still enough people that responded in the negative that part of me kind of hates to go parallel on both sides without giving any sort of warning to people about it. As I said, I personally love it, but I'm really hesitant to go parallel both sides without giving the public a little more advanced notice.
I think we should ease into it, and I see the virtue. I mean, it would be a lot easier to parallel park on both sides, because you'd have a larger, wider street if you did parallel on both sides. So that would help, that's the issue with people, you know, being stopped coming up the hill.
Question, Nathaniel. Can the bulb outs protrude farther out into the lanes than the width of the parking space, therefore giving people a little more safety as they're getting into their driver's door on the north side, passenger on the south side?
There is some standards on widths and how those are set up compared to parking spots that we standard, we follow basically the state standards since they are in state road. As far as parallel, parallel on those sides, the only small issue with that on a traffic engineering standpoint is right now, when you go to pull out of that parallel spot, you are looking in your mirror directly to your left. If you were parallel parking on the left side, you were looking across your passenger seat to pull out of your mirror. And there has been some studies showed that parallel on the left side of a road is a little bit of a driving issue for an increased accident possibility.
When you're backing out of that spot right now, you have to look in that same direction, but traffic's not stopped.
You have to hold your breath.
Yeah, I think it's dangerous right now.
That makes sense.
Yeah, you're looking right, yeah.
So if it were two-way traffic, it would be okay?
If it were two-way traffic, you're always, you're always moving at the traffic.
Well, we had one vote for that. It's a two.
Really glad you brought that up, that changed your thought.
Well, hold on a second.
Just me, someone, I didn't change your mind.
When you're, I know that when you're, when you're parallel parking, you're looking on your blind side, but the car behind you is, in theory, is stopped. When you're backing out of it right now, the cars are going, and you can't even see. You're backing up blindly right now, because it's on that left side. You're blacking, you're backing into blind traffic. Whereas if you're backing up parallel parking, at least the cars behind you in theory should be stopped.
Let me just suggest, when you do have the freedom to try and do a trial period on the, on the south side the same way you did on the north side, without, you know, making a definitive...
We can paint the north side and tape the south side and see what people say. Is that doable?
And I think we also need to take into consideration on that other parallel parking, the demographics and the age of a lot of our people.
I'll change my motion, if I can, to what John just said, that we go ahead and paint the north side as it is, and tape the south side and do a trial period again. That way, nobody's shocked, and if it works, it works, if it doesn't, we're not much worse for the wear.
Are you ready to do a test?
Well, we haven't had any, we haven't had any layout work on the other side. I mean, that, the preliminary work is what really takes to make those things fit in correctly and be applied correctly, so the work in front of actually just going out there and putting the tape down is the, is the bulk of the work.
Most of it are going to mirror the other side.
Yeah, and we had to, because of the current crosswalks, we have to fit basically the spaces in that we have, instead of altering those at the moment. That's why in the later project, where we will move the crosswalks and get everything fitting correctly, it's a little easier, but working with what we have right now makes it a little tougher, and, you know, quite a bit more work in the beginning to get done.
And Mr. Mayor and Counselor, I may as well, just something to kind of caution the board about, is we have been, staff has been meeting with NC DOT, and we've kind of tried to line this up with the possibility of being some commitment and funding on our end and their end. So the sooner we could have kind of a concrete plan to present back to them, because I know we've discussed funding with them, the possibility of October, late into the spring, so the more clear plan we could present to them, the better at the time it would be now.
That's our time limit.
I just caution the board on that one note.
There is a pot of funding that we can use, and there is a expiration date on that through NC DOT.
Okay. All right. Where's your motion right now? We're about to get lost.
I have one parent dying.
Does everyone agree to go ahead with paint on the north side?
Yes.
Yes.
And then what, can we just give you guys more time to work up a plan for the south side, or is that...
If we can get by this procedurally, since David's put one motion up, that it got a second, we never voted on, and then he changed it, but it didn't get a second. Since we're already there, I move, we paint what we've taped, and then we, as soon as you all can get it together, go ahead and carry it out on the right-hand side to...
Parish.
Well, it's actually probably to that Commerce Street, because on the other side, it probably is parallel. And continue to work on an overall plan to present to the state on a bulb out, which could mean if the plan shows and we get funding, us looking at the south side about what to do with it. That's my motion.
Good move.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
I'll draw your motion.
I would draw both of my motions.
All right, all in favor of Joe's motion? All right, thank you, Eric.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Counselor, I think you were up there, it was from legal out here. Yes, we...
I tried, tried, man, I've been really trying.
I think that you all are probably familiar enough with the Local Government Budget Fiscal Control Act, and that it generally requires the finance officer to stamp or state on most every kind of a commitment to expend public funds, that it's been pre-audited, meaning she's verified that there are funds in the budget for it. What we have not known forever and ever is what that meant when you had a, like, a credit card transaction, that she's not privy to before it happens, to say that before it happens, and make it a binding commitment to spend the thing. So did that make it legal or not, Emerald Gray area? A couple of years ago, there was direction to, from the legislature to the local government commission, to come up with rules about how we pre-audite, or how we can exempt those expenditures from pre-auditing. So what this resolution is about, finally they've come up with those rules, and this is the level of involvement that the town council needs to have in it, to just direct Kyra to come up with the system of keeping up with those things, and pre-auditing them to the extent that it still have to be, said to take advantage of the electronic payments without pre-auditing them ahead of time. So that's the focus of the resolution, and I would just, if you have any questions about the answer, I would just ask you to consider adopting it.
Someone like to just discuss it further, or go ahead with the motion? All right. Move? All in favor? All right, so that takes care of that one. Discussion on Uniform Guidance Policy.
Yes, sir, I have all the funds tonight. The Office of Management and Budget on the federal level has issued this Uniform Guidance that has to do with expenditure of federal funds. It's not something we get into a whole, whole lot here, but when we do, it tends to be more important stuff. It's things like emergency, might be emergency management type funds come down from FEMA. When you do it, you have to now, and as of, it's actually as of July 1st, you had to have in place policies that said, we're going to follow what this Uniform Guidance says about using federal funds to purchase goods or services or construction when you have those federal funds. So I, first off, bring all of these documents to you for your consideration and approval as, as policies of the town, but I also want to have some discussion with you. Looking back over the ordinances, I don't find any clear direction whether the council's got to approve policies. Now, clearly in the past, when you used to be, have a prior form of government, this was the executive and the legislative body of the town, you had to pass any kind of policy. It's not necessarily the case, and it's not legally required either, when you have sort of separated your executive function from what this board does. So I would, those may be too, too many things mixing together. I would first ask you to consider approval of the Uniform Guidance documents that we've presented, unless there are any questions about them, I'd answer.
Any questions to the board?
Motion to approve.
All right. Have a motion to approve, and a second? And Adam, second. All in favor?
So before we leave that topic, can, can, there may not be anything you can answer tonight, but we just don't have any clear direction in, I also have witnessed it over my time as town attorney, come up multiple times, where we've had a policy that got adopted at some point, and it's not been formally held onto, and in a, like, in a policy manual, and where everybody can put their hands on it to know what it is. I think we can, we need to start to work on that, but I think as part of doing that, it would help if we had direction as to what all you all want to review first. I would suggest, as a place to start, that these last two things are mandated by state and federal law, more or less. Where things are mandated, that we have a policy, and it doesn't have to be an ordinance that you are the only entity who can approve them, would you consider delegating to your town manager the authority to just implement a policy?
Sure.
And maybe inform you of it at your next meeting, something along those lines. How hands-on do you want to be on other things? I, I'm not sure where to draw a bright line for you about things like personnel policy that's, you know, it has legal bounds that are state or federal law, but it's not required. And so, you know, something to give some thought to is where does the council see its role in developing, not ordinances, but policies that are more day-to-day and more, you know, about day-to-day management, and more subject to change? For instance, Uniform Guidance stuff, there's already two or three things that this is changing rapidly, that we're going to have to make some changes in. And so, you know, for now, our plan is to make those changes and bring this stuff back to you again, but I don't think it's a good use of the council's time to keep reading the Uniform Guidance policies, things like that.
Can you give us an example of something?
So, well, I mean, like the Uniform Guidance policy, I don't think it's, you know, a good use of your time to read the Code of Federal Regulation sections that require you to say, okay, we'll do it this way, you know, things like that. Versus things like personnel policy that are very much how, I, I would think you would want to be involved in that. That's how you structure the employment, you know, environment of the town. So it's hard to, I'm not sure I know how to define this yet, where, other than to say, if it's mandated by state and federal law, I don't know why you don't make it an executive, purely adopt the policy and let us know about it, but we'll need to review and approve everything.
And you could just report it back, because I know, like, on our, for an example, maybe like our tax releases and refunds. Right now, there's a resolution in place that lets anything less than $100 your manager can approve, as long as your manager reports that at the next council meeting. So I think that's kind of something similar, you know, anything that's state or federal mandated, is let me, if it's ruled the board, I could report that back to your next meeting.
A double first cousin of these policies, in my opinion, is the role of the board members and on the different, what used to be considered committees, now considered liaisons. I'm not sure, I know how everything fits in, I'm not sure I'm very real comfortable yet exactly how things fit. I kind of got schooled on the committees with a couple, but that would be very common fodder. If we, not, I'm not talking about a retreat necessarily, maybe a special meeting, a little bit different, just to talk about how the board, what they sees as policy. You know, one policy I have to think of is, we never granted variances or waivers from the, I mean, is that a, is that an actual policy, or, you know, I don't know, but I think it's a limited subject matter, such as that, would be great for a meeting with some food and stuff.
I totally agree. This is about where the council sees it.
Yeah, see, our role, right.
Sort of leads into another thing, too, Mr. Collins, that I've often thought, is why we just don't have a consent agenda, where all these nickel-and-dine things can just be voted on at one time? Now, I know there are some local governments, I remember one case involving a pack of cigarettes, you remember that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And I think that's things that can get you bogged down, but I think a consent agenda would be something that we just... agenda would be something that would just wipe out a whole lot of things, and right now, we're spending time on it.
Could be. And they're very useful, a lot of school boards.
Absolutely, yeah. Do we need any kind of motion here?
You've approved, the action I need you to take tonight on that, I need you to take tonight, just for your consideration and discussion, it would be helpful, I think, for all of us if you consider, you know, continue to think about what the role is, and maybe, maybe do pick it, I don't know if you wanna pick a time to have a special meeting about it, or, I don't know.
It's not urgent, but it certainly would be beneficial, just some things that have come down from local government, but Councilmember Collins made an excellent point, you, the water example, like, there's just some things out there we've always heard about, it'd be nice if we could all sit down and be on the same page. So it may be a special meeting, but I don't think there's an urgency to it, but that's a great idea.
Should we entertain a date window? We talked at the last one we did, we should do it more often, I thought everybody was really happy with it, and I certainly don't think it hurts for us to talk to each other.
Let's get through the 4th of July, and then let's talk about there. Okay, anything else on that one? Let's move on to the Ford, Chapter 95 Parking, to the Town Planning Board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, I may real quick, what Mr. Henning and I were talking about, maybe once we get through the 4th at our August regular meeting, we'll have some times and dates available and let the board choose a date and time at that time. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last item I have for you is, between all the talk about changes on Main Street, there's been some other discussion about, I know it's come up occasionally, about where, how best to manage, who gets to getting the use of spaces on Main Street. Looking at both of those things, and for starters, your action tonight about the north side of Main Street requires a change in Chapter 75 Parking Schedules, that says all parking shall be, and I think that Daniel pointed this out early on, says all parking on Main Street shall be 45-degree angles, and it's none of them anywhere close to 45 degrees. And at any rate, however it got that way, it needs amendment, there's a slew of other things that are very outdated, do not how we do things now, you might wanna look at whether we wanna return to those things, or which, you know, just which way it ought to go. I thought, as sort of nebulous as that is, a place to start with, it might be for you all just to tell the planning board that you wanna see them study it, take input from, from the community about it, and if nothing else, I'll go through with them and get the ordinance up to stuff about, at least the things that I know have changed, the things that I think are different than our practice that they need to look at, or you all do, and then bring it back to you, maybe for your August meeting. And the reason I did a resolution for this, we don't normally do, but it's just sort of, you know, without a draft ordinance to send down to them or some, you know, some issue, I just wanted to help them get their hands on what it is you're asking them to do. So that's the purpose of this resolution, and what I think would be a good thing for the planning board and stuff, happy to answer any other questions about it, but if you just, I would ask you to adopt that resolution and for that planning board.
Okay, is there a motion? Mr. McManahan, okay, second, second, all in favor? Okay, that wraps you up right now, okay? Before we get into the announcements, let's go around the table and see if anybody's...
We need to have the closed session.
We're going to. You're getting ahead of me here. Let's go around the table and see if anybody's got anything they wanna bring up before we get into the closed session, any announcements? Yes, Mayor?
I'd like to, I know when we were here last time, I just wanted to kinda double-check how the bathrooms went, and if Ms. Woodard has any updates on it.
I have an update on it, yeah.
I'd be glad to, the board would, the mayor and council would wish. I actually spoke with County Manager Derek Rowland, and starting this weekend, the county's gonna take over overseeing security on the weekends for picking on the squares, so the county will be handling that moving forward.
They've already been there on two occasions. Yeah, they have a deputy there.
Thank you for the...
We're down for taking on the responsibility, thank you.
The town hall offices will be closed.
I bet something.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's fine. Getting my hair cut at Frankie on Saturday morning. I learned two things. The farmer's market's doing quite well, and apparently growing, and Frankie's barber shop is the bathroom for the farmer's market, those who have to go, maybe, yeah, okay, yeah, all right. And, and, you know, it's great that it's growing, my first thought is, besides me having in my vision on land we don't have a right to yet, I'm wondering if our parking lot with its bathroom on Saturday mornings would lay out as well or better for the farmer's market? It certainly would get them up on Main Street closer to the other shops, allow a good clean restroom, not counting on a merch, whoever is in charge, I would like to think that we would maybe consider letting them look at the layout to see whether or not it would be a preferred location.
There'd be a couple of things that I kinda would argue on it, is that there are similarities when that is used for lineup, for grades, festivities, and things like that.
That's right.
I did look into that, and that apparently is a county agricultural extension project for farmers' markets. It comes under Allen Durt.
Okay.
Well, but it is growing.
Yes, it is.
No two ways about it.
They could use the lawn, too, I mean, you could kinda spread out.
Well, you know, I just, you know, to see whether or not to put a bathroom inside.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, we'll have our 4th of July celebration at the Zeebo from 10 to 12, and I expect all of the council to be marching in the parade, bringing your pets. Employee luncheon and award ceremony will be Friday, July the 6th, 12 o'clock, Fat Buddies. Family movie night is this Friday, Mr. McManahan, 8 o'clock at Town Hall, and the movie will be Despicable Me 3. We hosted all day, we hosted the Gold Star Challenge children. These are the children of a parent that was killed in special operations, and I just came up, one of the things that we did, we swore them in, and they took over the town for about 30 minutes, and guess what I gave them as the program? They had to come up with a barking dog, gorgeous. They suddenly realized what people do up here, and what you can get into, and it was just delightful. One of the things they had to do, they had to pack up and carry a canoe from where? Up here? But they went to the fire department, they went to police department, and these children were just absolutely wonderful, wonderful. And on July the 11th, we're allowed, Duke Lightpoint is gonna come and give a little rundown on the services that they order here. It'll be a meeting open to the public, it'd be at 7 o'clock on July the 11th. They'll come in and just talk about the services that they order, that they have. You know, they have made a rather large contribution into the town up behind the Hampton Inn, and they're getting ready, I understand, for another expansion up there with services that they offer. So that's all I've got, and now we have a closed session to discuss, council, you wanna give us the motion to go into closed session?
Motion would be to go into closed session, that's similar to GS 143-382, 144, the discussed matters related to economic development and such.
Okay, and there will be no action coming out of that, I don't think, it's just the discussion, and as soon as we come out, we'll adjourn if you need to go now, leave now, 'cause it's not gonna be anything from this point on. Yes, sir?
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
All right, all in favor?
We're gonna run them off, we're going to say...
What time, we're going upstairs, you're not going to... What time does that show start?
There's 10 to 12.